Councilman Wisworth, would you please do the honors?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wisworth. Ready, Madam Clerk? You mute it, you mute it, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize. I'll start all over. So, good evening, Honorable City Council, to Mayor Burcroft and to our City Treasurer Stacy Page, to our Deputy Clerk, to all of our administrative staff, and to the listening audience. Today's date is Monday, April the 12th, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight three two two six eight three six six nine eight. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act 254 of 2020 and the resolution declaring a local state of emergency adopted by City Council on March 29th, 2021 by Resolution Number 21-093, which permits remote attendance by members of a public body using telephonic or video conferencing means in certain circumstances and to allow the public business of the Romulus City Council to be conducted in a manner that permits both the general public and the members of the public bodies to participate by electronic means under the circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public body must further identify specifically by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join this meeting from your, by phone, call 1-646-558-8656, and when prompted, enter the meeting ID followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the agenda. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Present, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
Councilman Barton.
Present, Romulus, Michigan.
We know that Councilwoman Roscoe is not present for this meeting.
Excuse.
And our condolences to Councilwoman Roscoe and her family. Councilwoman Tally.
Here, Romulus, Michigan.
Council, Councilman Wisworth.
It's here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Here, Romulus, Michigan.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda, number two, minutes, three, petitioner, four, chairperson's report, five, mayor's report, six, clerk's report, seven, treasurer's report, eight, public comment, nine, unfinished business, ten, new business, eleven, warrant, twelve, communication, and number thirteen, adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Webb?
Yes, I just sort of went into La La Land here for a minute.
Okay. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Okay.
Welcome back.
That's a good one.
Wow. Number two for the minute. Agenda item two A for approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, April 5th, 2021 at 7:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we, that we approve the minutes of April the 5th of 2021.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our regular meeting held on Monday, April the 5th, 2021 at 7:30. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B for approval are the minutes from the special meetings held on Monday, April 5th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM to discuss the preliminary 2021-2022 fiscal year budget.
So moved for approval of the minutes from the special meetings held on Monday, April 5th, 2021.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the minutes for a special meeting held on Monday, April 25th, 2021. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are, there are no petitioners on the agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At 6:00 PM, we just had a discussion proposed for the 2021-22 fiscal year budgets for the cities, the libraries, and the 34th Court. At this time, the Chair has no further report.
Through the Chair, I'd like to make that motion accept your chairperson's report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the chairperson's report.
Yes.
Mrs. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Treasurer, and listening audience. I did want to wish my condolences and ask for prayers for Councilwoman Roscoe for loss of her father. Please keep her in your thoughts and prayers. I do have a few action items, Mr. Chairman, tonight. The first of which is a request from Tanya Cofield, our Recreation Department Coordinator. This one is a request to concur with administration and authorize a no-fee permit. This would be for the use of Elmer Johnson Park Pavilion on Saturday, June 26th of this year for the Romulus High School class of 2011 for their reunion picnic. A 2021 park and pavilion rental application must be completed and submitted to Recreation Department prior to the issuance of that no-fee permit. I do want to make note because of the COVID that Tanya Cofield has confirmed the date available and all necessary safety protocols and social distancing requirements will be followed should City Council concur with the request.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we, that we issue a no-fee permit for the Romulus High School class of 2011.
Support.
In motion by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Mrs. Webb, for a no-fee permit for the Romulus High School class of 2021. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote.
Excuse me, through the Chair.
Yes.
You read 2021. 2011.
Huh?
It's 2011.
Class of 2011.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Well, John, on the front cover letter, it did say 2021, so there was a title.
2021.
So you're not going crazy.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Ms. Abdo. I appreciate that. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next is also a request from Tanya Cofield, Recreation Department Coordinator. This one is to concur with administration and authorize a no-fee permit for M V P Academy to use the St. John Lodge Park baseball fields for Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, beginning April 13th through July 13th of this year. A 2021 parks and pavilion rental application will also be submitted, and also they will be following the protocol.
Through the Chair.
Let's go ahead, Ms. Tally.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with administration and authorize a no-fee permit for M V P, excuse me, Academy to the, for use of the St. John's Lodge Park baseball fields on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:30 to 8:00, beginning April 13th, 2021 through July 13th, 2021. A 2021 parks and pavilion rental application must be completed and submitted to the Recreation Department department prior to issuance of the no-fee permit. And I do have a question.
Okay, who support that first?
I'll support with comment, please.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, request for a no-fee permit for the M V P Academy. Discussion of Ms. Tally and then Mrs. Abdo.
Yeah, and I did talk to Tanya earlier. On the motion, it says on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but then in the detail, it just says Tuesday, so I just want to make sure I'm making the right motion.
Yes, I believe that it is going to be on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Abdo?
I just wanted to note that they have agreed to help keep the field in shape by raking, picking up litter on a weekly basis, and helping maintain the park. And I think that's important.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other further question, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next is also a request from Tanya Cofield. This one is to concur with administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the use of historical park for the annual bird family reunion on July 25th of this year. Also, the park pavilion rental application must be completed and submitted to Rec Department prior to issuance of the permit, and also the, the date is available, and those protocols for social distancing will be in place.
Through the Chair. I'd like to make that, I'd like to make that motion to concur with administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the use of the historical park for the annual bird family reunion on July 25th, 2021.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wisworth, for request for a no-fee permit for the bird family reunion. Any discussion?
Yes, John.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Abdo.
I just wanted the public to know why this is, that the bird family, the people that donated the big historical house on Wayne Road, the Bird Family Home, that this is all related. Some people may be saying, why are they able to use this historical park, you know, for nothing? So I just wanted to bring that out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Abdo. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next, there's two separate motions, and that's because different terms. This is action for the Municipal Library Board reappointments. The first request that's before you is a request to concur with administration and approve the reappointment of Candace Lukowitz to the Municipal Library Board with a one-year term that would expire on April 11th, 2022.
Through the Chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I would like to make that motion to concur with administration, approve the reappointment of Candace Lukowitz to the Municipal Library Board with a one-year term to expire April 11th, 2022.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Williams, to concur with the administration, approve the reappointment of Candace Lukowitz to the Municipal Library Board with a one-year term to expire on April 11th, 2022. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Council. And the second reappointment is to concur with administration, approve the reappointment of James Napierkowski to the Municipal Library Board with a five-year term that would expire April 11th, 2026.
So moved.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, to concur with administration, approve the reappointment of James Napierkowski to the Municipal Library Board with a five-year term to expire April 11th, 2026. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Council. Last action item is a budget amendment. This one is to concur with administration and to introduce Budget Amendment 20/21-19 for preparation of the actuarial funding valuation of the City of Romulus Retiree Healthcare Plan as of June 30th, 2020. The budget amendment was for $17,500.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the introduction of Budget Amendment 20/21-19. It's for the City of Romulus Retirees Healthcare Plan.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Tally, for introduction of Budget Amendment 20/21-19. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Number six is the clerk's report. I have one action item under my report, and what you have before you is for introduction and first reading of an amendment to City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Article 2, Section 30-25. These are the procedures for issuance of a certificate of registration. And basically, what's going on, Council, is that we've asked, we're asking you to amend this section of our ordinance for renewals. All we did was just take out the notary requirement, and it's only for renewals or duplicate certificates. We, we would already have an original application on file that has already been notarized. So what we're trying to do is become, you know, more business-friendly. We found that during the pandemic, you know, when we were all, everything was shut down, we're doing everything electronically, and we had businesses that were sending in their renewals and a check, but it was hard, you know, for the notary part of it. So we found that if, you know, if there, if there are no changes or anything for a renewal, then they would not have, the notar, I'm sorry, the notarization requirement would not be needed. We've also added, instead of that application, it's now part of their invoice. So all of that information, the invoice and the application is one document. Makes it easier for the businesses when we send that out to them. They get it back to us, no changes. They have a check along with their renewal, and we're able to go ahead and process those renewals. So that's what we're just amending here for this ordinance amendment.
Thank you for explaining that.
We have a motion.
Through the Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Tally.
I'd like to make that motion for the introduction, the first reading of amendment to Section 30-25 of City Code of Ordinances, please.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the introduction of the first reading of amendment to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council, and that concludes the clerk's report. Number seven is the treasurer's report. And I know our city treasurer is online.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. I have one item that I wanted to report under my agenda. There was a resident that brought to the attention of the mayor's office that if I was to dive into the unclaimedproperty.michigan.gov, there was some unclaimed property for the City of Romulus. So I did do that, and I did find that information out, and I'm in through the process of claiming that. But, so I want to thank that resident for bringing it to our attention, but I also want to let our residents know that when I put in City of Romulus for the last or business name, lots of properties or lots of names came up that I recognized here in the city. So I encourage you to go to the website. I encourage you to go to unclaimedproperty.michigan.gov, type in your name. It's also asking for the city in zip code, and see if you're in there, or see if a family member's in there, and please reach out and let them know. I put in City of Romulus, several people came up. So I encourage you to go in there, take a look, and see if you're in there or somebody that you know. Again, that said, unclaimedproperty.michigan.gov. And that's all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Through the Chair, may I ask the Treasurer one, it's a simple question. Is it Michigan spelled out, or M.I.?
It is Michigan spelled out.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Of course, and if you have any questions, you can always call my office. I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
Repeat that one more time, please.
Sure. It is unclaimedproperty.michigan.gov.
Okay.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the resident that shared that with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, number nine, I'm sorry, number eight, and that's public comment. And this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those who speak. If you've joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app, and then tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself after you've been acknowledged. If dialing in from a touchstone phone, press the star nine to raise your hand, and then press star six from your phone to unmute yourself when you've been acknowledged. After you have been acknowledged, we ask that, just for the record, that you would state your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Upon expiration of those three minutes, you may be muted, pending if you have not asked for additional time from the chairperson to continue with your comments. Again, you will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. If you do not have that approval and you continue on, then you will be muted. Also, as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by mail to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And again, at this time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to address City Council, we ask that you use the raise hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. If you're not sure how to do that, and your video is on, you can raise your hand, and then we can, we can acknowledge you. Okay. We have several people here, and I believe the first person that I saw with the raised hand was Mr. Vanderbrook. So we have Ronald Vanderbrook. So I'm going to unmute you, Mr. Vanderbrook, and you will have three minutes to speak. Go ahead.
Hi. Punch you later. 11398. Harrison Street. And I was referring to that property address today because I was interested in acquiring it and getting it off the demolition list and making it up to code. Get the proper taxes paid, you know? I've got people over there with a couple dumpsters already this week cleaning it up, making the property look good out front. I know it's been a blight for a while, and I saw it. And so I was hoping that, I know they have, they tabled this demolition for a while, while we had the opportunity to start cleaning it up, showing that we're serious about making the property look good, bringing it to code. So tonight, I'm asking for you to approve, me being able to do that, to acquire the property and bring it to code as a residential property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderbrook. The next person that's requesting to speak, and forgive me if I mispronounce your first name, but I believe it's Kieta McKinney. And you may now address City Council.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council. My name is Kieta McKinney, and I am a representative from Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib's office. I just wanted to take a quick moment to go ahead and give a brief update. I know time's very limited tonight, so I'll be quick. I just wanted to go ahead and provide additional information regarding some of the questions our office has received, one being the most recent economic impact payment. I know that there's been several residents who ran into issues obtaining either their second stimulus payment or have concerns or questions regarding the third. I just want to make it known that our office has been assisting residents with any questions regarding this matter. So I encourage any of our residents who have not already filed a recovery rebate credit and have not obtained their stimulus payments to do so. And then also too, if you have any questions or concerns regarding that, please feel free to contact our office. I will leave that information in the chat. And then secondly, also regarding resources, we know that there is the COVID Emergency Relief Assistance Program, which is called the CERA program of the State of Michigan for those who need housing and rental assistance as well as utility assistance. I wanted to clarify a couple of questions that our office also received. That is basically a more modified version of last year's economic, I'm sorry, eviction diversion program. And while there's residents who are concerned about eligibility requirements, I just want to let it be known that those who qualify for that program most definitely can reapply for this one. So again, I just want to extend my services to you all, and I will go ahead and leave that information in the chat and can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You.
Mr. Chair, I do not see any other hands raised from anyone indicating that they are wishing to address City Council.
Okay. Well, Madam Clerk, we'll close that part out.
Okay. That takes us to number nine, which is unfinished business. And this is, it's in two parts. And 9A would be the motion to untable the actions on the properties from the demolition list 20-01 for locations 11398 Harrison, 11647 Middle Belt, and 11528 White Horn. This matter was tabled at the February 8th, 2021 Regular Council Meeting, and before any discussion on the demolition list, you will have to untable it. A motion will be in order to untable it.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we uh, put it back on the table.
Support.
Who supported that?
Tally.
Ms. Tally and Abdo.
Okay. It's been motioned by uh, Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Abdo to untable the action on the properties from the demolition list twenty dash oh one, eleven three ninety-eight Harrison, eleven six forty-seven Middle Belt, eleven five twenty-eight White Horn, tabled at the two eight twenty twenty-one regular council meeting. Any question? Any discussion? No discussion. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, a hearing, I'm sorry, nine B, a public hearing was held the removal of debris on the properties described in demolition list twenty dash zero one at that, at that hearing and by resolution of city council, by resolution number twenty-one dash zero four two. At the regular council meeting held thereafter, the following properties were tabled for sixty days. Eleven three ninety-eight Harrison, sixteen four forty-seven Middle Belt, eleven five twenty-eight White Horn. Robert McCray, McCray, Director of Public Services and Economic Development, has submitted his status report on the compliance efforts of owners and or interested parties of the stated properties. The agenda item is a continuation of the request by the Department of Building and Safety at the February eighth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting. And that is for council to approve the demolition and removal of all debris for the aforementioned um, properties from demolition list twenty dash zero one. Therefore, it's up to council at this point uh, to approve um, the demolition of those structures. That's the motion.
Uh, through the chair, may I say something first? Uh, Bob, there's a gentleman, I think it's two gentlemen, two gentlemen on the line uh, stating that I, I think Mr. Vanderbrook wanted to purchase the property. I thought that property belonged to someone else and it is still on the demolition list. I mean, it was tabled, but it will be on the demolition list. Has he contacted you?
The owner of the property is on the line.
Okay, the owner of the property. I thought, sir, excuse me, I just thought that you said you wanted to purchase the property.
Well, Mr. Vanderbrook wants to purchase it. And I'm the owner, Frank Romeo.
But it's still the recommendation of the Department of Building and Safety. Um, this property has been vacated since uh, November two thousand and five. It's been a repeated blight to the community, several boardups. Um, it's also losses not conforming residential status. Um, so our recommendation on this property would be requested that it be left on demolition list twenty dash zero one.
And thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we approve the demolition list as stated.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wisworth for approval of demolition. Destruction. Uh, may I say something, please? Go ahead. Uh, we've uh, we've got a lot of money tied up in remodeling and, and improvements in the house right now. The house is just about ready for a city inspection. And uh, it did be the wrong thing to do to de- demolish the house at this point. Uh, I can go on and on as far as the number of reasons uh, that it'd be the wrong thing. And, and actually, the city, the building department, the city around this building department has the uh, contract from the contractor, Mr. Vanderbrook and uh, his, his partner uh, to re, to, to put the place back into excellent condition and, and do everything it needs and have the city uh, inspect it and put it back on the property tax rolls. Uh, and uh, there's really no reason. It's a, it's a sturdy brick house. It's fifteen hundred square feet with a basement. And uh, there's no, there's no reason any, anybody would want to demolish it. We've had, uh, we've had discussions with the city, the building department and the mayor's office. And uh, for the life of me, I can't see why uh, you know, you're taking the, the you, you know, the, the, you, you want to demolish a good property and uh, give them, give them, how's this, table it for another sixty days and at, at the end of sixty days, if not sooner, it'll be ready for you to inspect and uh, and sell. Uh, give them, give them, Mr. Vanderbrook and Mr. Jones sixty days. Uh, and the owner, Frank Romeo, sixty days, myself, and uh, we will have that looking just like new.
Uh, through the chair, from May, we are in the middle of a motion.
Just a minute. Uh, let me, let me, let me uh, intervene here. Uh, Ms. McCray and Eric, we've spoken on this. The motion was made by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms., Mr. Wisworth. And we go continue this uh, motion. Uh, if there's no discussion from council. Uh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Okay. Then we move on to the next agenda item, number ten, for new business.
Any new business?
If there's no new business, next on the agenda for approval is uh, warrant twenty-one dash seven.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Abdo?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pay warrant twenty-one dash seven in the following amounts. General fund, one hundred six thousand, seven hundred five dollars and twenty-one cents. Major street fund, six thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Local street fund, four thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Public safety fund, fifty-six thousand, two hundred eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Romulus Athletic Center, one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Cable TV, eleven ninety-nine. Merriman Street, or Merriman Road Special Assessment, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Street lighting fund, forty-nine thousand, three hundred six dollars and eighty cents. Oakwood Scent, six hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. CDBG, sixty-five dollars. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Nine eleven service fund, eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents. NARC forfeiture for the state, one thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Library fund, seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. DDA, nine thousand, two hundred twelve dollars and sixteen cents. Tifa District Two, one hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Beverly Road Special Assessment, two thousand, forty dollars. CIP bonds, the court building, three hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty, fifty cents. E-course and binding capital improvement bonds, two hundred and five thousand, twelve thou, twelve dollars and fifty cents. Capital improvement bonds, uh, twenty fourteen capital improvement bonds, hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty cents. Water and sewer fund, one million, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Motor vehicle, twenty-two thousand, eighty-nine dollars and five cents. Technology services, twenty-one thousand, two hundred two dollars and ninety-four cents. Retiree insurance benefits, ten thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Revolving fund, three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Current tax, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Payroll fund, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars, eighty-eight cents. Totalling all funds, two million, three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mrs. Tally to pay warrant number twenty-one dash seven for two million, three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Any discussion? Hear no discussion?
Yes, John.
Go ahead, obviously.
Yes, check number seventy-four, eight, zero, four. New badge, the new ID badge printer, is that something we've already had and we replacing it? Or, I mean, what's the purpose of this item? Is the mayor still on?
Yeah, I sure am. My understanding is it was a, it was a ID badge printer for HR that was replaced, so if it needs to be altered, we'll let you know. I did want, also, also want to mention in the back page, per council's request, that Constellation gas bill is broken up by address as requested.
I see that and thank you so much. And I just wanted to know what, you know, what department it was for and was it new, so thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Number twelve is communication.
Through the chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
Just wanted to express my grief over um, you know, the, the Celeste, the loss of her dad. And wanted to ask Madam Clerk, is there something we can do as a council for the family during this time? Flowers or something like that, can we do? I think that would just be appropriate. Um, she's one of our own.
We will uh, make the arrangements.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes. Like, I know last week or at the last council meeting, the mayor said he had uh, put that in motion. But I would just like to uh, for the council to actually approve a motion to make sure uh, that we do no water shut offs uh, up until the um, uh, up until June the thirtieth, as we did with uh, having meetings uh, on, on Zoom. So if someone would be willing to support my motion.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Abdo. Uh, for that motion, any discussion?
Yes, under discussion, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, can you, uh, can you please restate that motion? I, I didn't get the wording. I, I apologize. I just want to make sure just for the minutes.
Okay.
Extend the no water shut off until June the thirtieth, as we did uh, uh, for the uh, continuing on with the Zoom meeting.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could, could I just ask for clarification on that? That would be for, where the reason was for non-payment, correct? Cause we could have other situations where somebody was stealing water, for example. So you're talking about persons who
The non-payment, yes.
Didn't able to pay their bill. Those would be, there'd be no shut offs until end of June.
Well, it can be the same shut off notice, uh, Attorney Steve, that we had before, before it expired. So if that's what it was, it, it excluded someone still in the water, then so be it.
Okay.
Definitely, we don't want to support that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, we're saying extend the no water shut offs for non-payment?
Non-payment.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes, with discussion, I, I did have one question in regards to this uh, extension. I believe in our last meeting or the meeting before, we did discuss uh, that the residents would have they have the opportunity to still pay on their water bill.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Right.
I just want to make this clear. It's actually an extension that if they don't pay the full bill, they won't shut off.
Yes.
And, and I've, I've said it to many residents that call me, yes, it would be wise to continue to make the smallest payment or the biggest payment. So when this extension run out, you're not stuck with a huge water bill.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
And also, I would just like to, uh, through the chair, I would just like to uh, just inform the residents that the forgotten harvest is still at the high school. We had to change the time from eleven um, because the school gets out at um, the buses pull up at a, a quarter to two, so we want to make sure that we are out of there. So we're still there uh, from eleven to uh, one fifteen. And as I've always said, all you need is your uh, address and your name and uh, you'll be loaded up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, John, I want to, I just got a text, so I want to let this be known because uh, Mr. Heimberg also informed me last week about the um, unclaimed property. So I just wanted to give him um, thanks for, for sharing that information because a lot of information and sometime the mayor office informs us, the treasurer's office and the folks' office. We're, we're not connected to where we get that information, so I really appreciate him uh, sharing that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and through the chair from May, I have one comment as well as one announcement. My comment is to my colleague and her family.
Okay.
Our hearts all go out to her and that family, so let's just keep them in prayer. And the announcement is the Community Shred Day, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, from nine AM until twelve PM at the Romulus City Hall complex. There will be a drive-through event. Pull up to the shred truck. Staff will be directing the traffic. Please stay in your vehicle and an electrocycle employee will remove the boxes from your vehicle, dump the documents, and return your boxes to the vehicle. There is a limit of two boxes per vehicle. The boxes should not be larger than a standard banker box. For more information, you can call the clerk's office at seven three four nine five five four five four zero. Again, you can bring your shredded papers to the city hall, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you. Through the chair?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say this, behind uh, our congressperson Rashida Tlaib, uh, representative that spoke earlier. I know I've been noticing and a lot of residents been uh, informing me that our mayor and his chief of staff have made sure that same information, in case you don't get it. I'm sorry. That same information is on the city website for any resident that did not get the address. You can go to this uh, city website and that document is up there. And I, I want to thank Julie and the mayor for making sure that that's on our city website. Thank you. And that's about the, the light bill, the, your water bill, the taxes. And they have all type of uh, services through that uh, particular uh, fund, so thank you, mayor, thank you, Julie.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk?
Is there any more communication from council? If not, that'll take us to number thirteen, adjournment, and the time is eight nineteen PM.
I'll move.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth. Who supported that?
I did.
Oh, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
For adjournment, Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.